If you have a cellphone on your page, could you please put it on vibrate or silent so you don't have phone calls during our meeting? And if anyone's gonna testify tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you are gonna speak tonight at all, please stand up and take an oath. If you don't take an oath, you will not speak.
Can you speak to this?
If you might.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to waive the minutes of July, June 28th, please, the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the minutes to the meeting of June 28th.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, so move. Tonight, on old business, 90 School Street, 90 School Street here?
Yes, sir.
We only have four people. Would you like to wait till the fifth comes, or you wanna go forward?
I think we can go forward.
Okay. All right. Case number ZBA 2235. Bud Buzz Inc., Steve Guard for varying special permit to operate a delivery operating establishment for recreational marijuana products on the premise number 90 School Street. The applicant or representative here, you have the floor, sir. Name and address are right.
Thank you very much. Attorney Steve Guard, 1165 Washington Street, Hanover. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I wanna thank the board for the courtesy of allowing me to go first, as I have another matter later this evening in a different town. So I appreciate the courtesy. The applicant proposes to operate pursuant to Quincy Municipal Code and state regulations, a delivery operator's establishment for recreational marijuana products at 90 School Street. The applicant has obtained a host community agreement signed by the mayor with the city of Quincy and a provisional license from the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission for this use. The facility is proposed to be at 90 School Street, where the applicant has a long-term lease with the owner. You may recognize this particular site as the former Dorchester Door and Window Site, currently at the corner of Thomas Bergen and Franklin Street. It's in, right now, it's located in the B1 district, where such use is allowed by special permit. The applicant proposes to the, a raise, not raise, I'm sorry, to renovate the 14,000 square foot building. My narrative mentions finished space, that's a loose term. It's not currently finished much at all. But the premises is located on approximately a 10,000 square foot lot. Lot is oddly shaped, and of course, the topography varies, because the building is both above and below the grade of School Street. There are no changes to the lot, nor is there any changes to the footprint of the building, just renovations to the exterior and interior to update the building for the purposes of the applicant's use. The community needs to serve, as the city of Quincy has voted to authorize the retail sales of adult-use cannabis in the town, in the city, the applicant-proposed proposal will allow Quincy to enter into the host agreement, which would allow Quincy to receive the host impact fee during that term. The applicant is requesting a parking variance, however, because the site really only allows for two parking spaces, two loading spaces, and then we have two garage bays where the automobiles, the delivery vehicles, will be loaded and unloaded inside the building. So there is, we applied under Chapter 375, Section 6.11.4.1 for a variance to allow off-site parking. The applicant, with me, by the way, is Ben Verga, he's the principal of Bud Buzz Inc., has agreements in progress with various private and public parking areas nearby. Submitted late yesterday is a traffic report that we received from our traffic consultant, which nicely details the proximity of this site to various public transportation as well. I would direct you to that document in front of you, in your packages. The applicant is also requesting a variance from Chapter 375, 6.11.4.1, which is that distance from the residential district. This, the 1,500-foot distance, as well as a variance from the licensed establishments clause in the zoning code, which is 6.1141A-K, which is the 500 feet from a licensed establishment, like a restaurant or a bar. So there aren't any real sites in Quincy that comply with that 1,500 feet, there's just no place to put it. Now, what I will say about this particular use is that, I probably should've started with this. This is not a typical recreational marijuana dispensary, retail dispensary. This is a delivery warehouse. There will be no signage on this warehouse. There will be no public allowed in this warehouse. There will be roughly six employees in the warehouse. We, right now, will probably only have three or four delivery vehicles, which are required by the Cannabis Control Commission regulations to be nondescript. There will be no cash transacted at the vehicle at the delivery, or even kept in the warehouse. Everything has to be done by electronic fund transfer, like a credit card or debit card. So the idea is, honestly, it's gonna be almost impossible to tell that this place is what it's doing. It's just, the idea is that this will be a very nondescript, benign use to this particular location. The land is owned by Squaw Walk Realty LLC, again, the former Dorchester Door and Window Facility. As far as security measures go, we are heavily regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission, the CMRs of Massachusetts, but I can assure you that my narrative does a very descriptive detail of the security that's in place with cameras. The place is locked, key-coded. The vault, the cannabis will be stored in a vault while it's in our facility, and only secured, limited access area approved personnel is allowed into that area. So they have to have special training, they have to have special identification badges. By the way, this particular applicant already owns a cannabis retail store in Marshfield. It's called South Shore Bud's, and it have had a successful record since opening, about a year or so ago. Just went through 4th of July, just went through the Levitate Festival, where more than 15,000 people a day came into town. No incidents whatsoever with respect to the police firing, anything like that as well. The security measures, the security narrative that was submitted to the police department, and I believe the police chief commented on that, as he was satisfied with the security measures to be taken for this particular use. So, other documents in your packet, of course, and again, I did upload the host community agreement signed by the mayor, but I did it today, it came in today, so I apologize if you don't have that in your packets. I certainly have an extra copy or two to provide to you, but we were very excited about having that.
Could you give us one of those for the records, that'd be great?
Sure. You know what, I'll also give you is the, that traffic report, the traffic study that we did by Howard Hudson Stein as well, just so.
Did planning make you do that?
What's that?
Did planning make you do that?
No, we just did it on our, we just did it, we do it pretty much with every site, just wanted to make sure that I had the appropriate information.
You're saying no one's going, right?
Correct, correct. Honestly, the report, for me, it was more for my benefit to understand what the traffic impacts would be, but he also did a really nice job of identifying all the public transportation outlets for the folks that are gonna be working there, the delivery vehicles, because I'm asking you folks for a parking variance. But, you know, most of the employees are gonna take public transportation, or park in the city lots and walk over to the site to go to work. So, but I appreciate the note that it wasn't required, but we definitely, we tend to be belts and suspenders with these types of facilities. We find it works a little bit better, maybe do a little bit more as far as providing the board with a little bit more information. Also submitted, in the online application purposes, the copy of the assessors map, it shows the radiuses. There's also a small plan there that was done by the engineer that does show the walking distances to the various residential districts and whatnot, that we were asking for relief from as far as the distances go. Again, if there's an application that could possibly get a variance for those two distances, this, I propose to the board that this would be the use, as it is, it's basically a warehouse, and we just, a delivery distribution center. There is no consumption, obviously, on the premises. The packages are not even ever opened. There's no assembly or manufacturing of the packages on the premises. Where it comes in pre-assembled from our other facilities, this is just a place where we can, the jumping off point to get the stuff in the cars, to make the delivery to the city of Quincy more efficient. We're already delivering to Quincy from Marshfield. It's just, you know, because we can do that, because it's allowed, cannabis is allowed, cannabis retail sales is allowed in any town, that, if it's allowed in any town, delivery's allowed in that town as well. So, this, having the district distribution center here is a boon for Quincy, because then we can agree to the impact fee of Quincy.
The question I have is, and when I started reading all this.
Sure.
You give a delivery.
Correct.
How do I know it's never gonna get in the hands of a child? Explain why.
That's a really good point. And in the packet, I believe it's in the police, the narrative that we did for the security.
I'm ready.
The regulations for delivery are super impressive, and I get this question a lot. So, the delivery vehicle is, again, nondescript, no one's supposed to know what it's doing. They have to have on file with our site, our company, a method of payment in an identification approved, Cannabis Control Commission approved identification. They have to, you have to be present when the vehicle shows up. Two people have to drive the vehicle, there are two delivery people in the vehicle. The cameras in the car are seven, six?
Six cameras in the car, each present when the car is working.
Body camera. They literally, then they have a tablet, and they pull up the identification and the order, and the person, they have to match the physical identification with the physical, the identification that's on record with us. The person who orders, that does make the order, must be at the house to pick it up. If they're not, you can't leave it with a kid, can't even leave it with a neighbor. An adult neighbor cannot pick up your delivery. You have to, you turn around and come back.
Can't leave it with your spouse.
Even a spouse.
And your spouse is there, you can't make the delivery.
Well, I want her smoking anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the easiest way to contribute, I mean, to answer your question is, we can guarantee it won't get to children.
Yeah.
From us, if it is found in the hands of a minor, and you can, you can tell us that it was bought from our establishment, I can tell you who purchased it, so the police can arrest them for contributing to delinquency of the minor, because it certainly was us. Obviously, what's.
I read this stuff, and I was trying to just figure out how you could get around it, that's all. That was my only question, that was really my only question in this whole business, is how, and.
Ben brings up a good point, and your question brings up a good point. Each item is barcoded, so it gets tracked from start to finish, so we can track every single item. If it gets recovered on the street, and the police grab the barcode, they can give it to us, and we can tell you exactly where it was delivered, we'll show you the video of who picked it up, and who paid for it, and after that, you're gonna know who, obviously, let it get into the hands of someone.
We average, we average about two to three deliveries a day right now that are undeliverable, and it's because of the fact that it's not to the regulations, so even if we would drive all the way there, show up, and it won't be exact to the regulations, and we will not do the transaction, we'll leave with the product. So every night on our report, you know, we're doing about 50 or 60 deliveries a day right now, and two or three of them are always undeliverable, it's because the drivers got there, and it wasn't exactly to the rights, so they have, they just can't make the sale.
Is there an extra fee for going back?
I'm sorry?
Is there an extra fee to go back?
Re-show them fee or something.
Um, no, I mean, they, they just buy it, and if they make the transaction again, they don't actually pay us until they take the product, so we don't charge an extra fee if we have to go back. We just made it note that that address was undeliverable.
And all of that goes into a report that gets submitted to the triple C.
Right, and then you're lost, after a few times, you stop, yeah.
Oh, aye, for once, yes. We paid two guys in gas prices, yes.
Exactly.
It takes once.
Any questions?
No, not at this time.
Any questions, Mr. Hanover?
No, thank you.
So, Brian?
Could I ask you what time the stealth operation, with your operation, how was it?
I forgot to mention that. So, the employees will be there between, like, 7:00 in the morning and 9:00 at night, doing assemblies and doing the books and things like that, but the delivery part of it will only be from 10:00 to 8:00, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That'll, the only time the deliveries will go out.
That's a lot, it requires us to be off the road by 8:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, closed. Don't have any correspondence from the city, I know they signed their agreement. If anyone wants to look at it, right there, put it back in the folder when you're done. Is there anyone, there's no correspondence here, is anyone opposing on the side? First call? Second call?
I'd like to speak, please.
Swerethill.
John Swerethill, 62 Bramwell Road. Thank you for having a meeting tonight. I'm not against, you know, the marijuana business. I'm actually in the social equity program right now. And we're actually talking about how you start the delivery-only business. And, you know, I come to these meetings all the time, so I'm not here because of you guys, I'm just here, just happens to be a coincidence. So, you know, I just, you know, use this logic, okay? I actually asked this question in class the other day. I said, does the Cannabis Control Commission, do they have any parking requirements for a retail organization or for a delivery? They don't have any rules. They basically leave it for the mayor or the town administrators to make that host community agreement, and then if they have zoning, which we did pass zoning, but this is the second place now that we're putting in, since we did zoning, which is asking for a variance, so so far, no one has put anything in the area which we, the city council actually designated us to go in. It's supposed to be 500 feet away from a school. Now, I asked a question, just to be funny, on the chat last night, can it be located on School Street? And, you know, she misunderstood what I said, you know, like a street that has a school. But obviously, there must've been a school there, and at the church, St. John's, there's Sunday School. It's more of the center of the town and stuff, so this is my logic on the parking. These people, it's good to say that maybe they might take public transportation to get there, but these are people who drive for a living, okay? So they're, they're most likely gonna have cars, and since two people have to be in each car, and there also has to be people working in the place, there needs to be lots of places for people to park their cars, okay? They have the right to do that, the Cannabis Control Commission doesn't care if they do that. You know, the mayor obviously signed it, the mayor's totally fine with this, okay? But, is it fair to the neighbors, the residential neighborhood over there? There, that's just right next to the prime gas station, where it's impossible to park even to get gas sometimes, okay? You know, there's no excess place where you can park on School Street, you know, and when I was going down Bergen Parkway, I was, you know, envisioning like a giant pole sticking up in the air, because you can actually see that, that's kinda like right where the bridge is. So I'm also afraid too, in the future, you know, we saw about the billboards, there might be a billboard there and whatever. But another thing that you gotta remember about delivery-only business, you have the right to buy marijuana wholesale from anyone who has a manufacturing license, who's producing marijuana. If you have a delivery-only license, you also have the right to re-wholesale that to somebody else, too. So it's not just driving to, there's gonna be people working there, and, you know, all throughout Quincy and stuff, you know, right off the top of my head, you know, a place where there's lots of parking, and there's a pretty big building, where nobody wants something developed, that old Chinese food restaurant that, you know, everyone's complaining about. There are places in Quincy where, you know, it would make more sense. I'm not saying that you should not grant the applicant a variance, but, I mean, does this make sense? You know what I'm saying? I mean, and we're putting it, like I said, I mean, it's, you know, customers aren't gonna be going there, so we don't have to worry about that, that's not gonna be a negative thing, but to me, you know, there's gonna be like 10 or 12 people that have to park, and, you know, to grant them a parking, you know, variance there, we're basically saying in Quincy that you can do business, you can have a restaurant, the new Quincy is that, you know, the future, there's gonna be no parking, but this is almost like a cab company. Like, are they saying they're gonna have all, all their vehicles inside the building at night? Like, I'm not sure how that building is, can you, is it like a place where you can...
John, if you went over and saw it, there's probably really eight spaces in the corner where you're pulling where the two bays are, so they just couldn't park there probably when the big trucks were coming. They could park on that side of the building.
Right, well, like I said, I personally, myself, I mean, I mean, I think they should keep looking and find a better location. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else now? Is there anyone else opposing on the side? Last call, all the party here in close. I think when I looked at the place, it was out of the way, and it was, it was kinda like, you're never even gonna know it's there. I really thought it was a good place for that. So I will be voting in favor, and I'm glad you did that traffic study, even though you didn't need it. Thank you.
I've been inside the building, up the second floor, even though it's a little bit enticing getting in there. It's a good-sized building, there is parking, as the chairman mentioned, so, and there's no opposition tonight, so I, I'm voting in favor.
I think it's better than the proposed original apartment that one is. I'll be voting in favor as well.
Earlier, and you said you have a potential agreement for off-site parking?
Yes.
How many?
We can do 30 spots around the corner on Water Street. We have, MBTA's offers two different packages for some of their service lots for the delivery vehicles overnight, which is, you know, they're less than a quarter mile, and the city has that spot where Berry Parkway and Walter Hand Parkway intersects, that new surface lot, that I don't think has ever had more than five spots. We've been speaking with Mr. Walker about basically parking there for the delivery vehicles, so we're gonna start off with a small fleet, we'll let the fleet build up, we'll take advantage of one of those, and, but until we get the fleet built up, we'll be keeping the vehicles overnight in Marshfield to bring them up in the morning, Quincy.
I didn't mention that, too. Where night parking spaces in Marshfield, we'll just keep it out there.
Yep, but we'll be able to secure, I mean, we'll never be more than the 30 spots I can rent right now. Yeah, there is no auto insurance for cannabis delivery companies, so the insurance alone that costs is more than we can sell. So, but when we get up to five, those vehicles we're keeping there, we'll secure either on-site or, I mean, just off-site, you know, the T or the city or private spot, we have multiple options.
Mr. Chairman, do you think somebody would be monitoring them? With the interest, they had an increase in the, in their volume?
I think, I think they would, yes.
I'm sure there were complaints, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and for us, it's just, it's also, we need to have them in a central location, so as soon as we start keeping vehicles in Quincy, we'll have off-street parking, because we'll have to have a standard operating procedure provided by Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay.
Because we have to, they, they want that all documented, they need to know where the vehicles are going, and how the, you know, people get their keys and all that. So what we'll basically do is rent spots for the delivery vehicles, then the riders will park in them where the vehicle is, because we'll rent the spot 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so they'll just be swapping it out.
Okay, based on that information, I'll probably be in favor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 22-35, I make a motion to grant the requested variance, I'm sorry, Bud Buzz Inc.'s Steve Guard for a variance, special permit to operate a delivery operator establishment for recreational marijuana products at the premises numbered 90 School Street. I make a motion to grant the requested variance and special permit.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, so move. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry, guys.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Ray Dal, he's with us. Let's continue on a search here. ZBA 2234, Old Business, 307 Water Street. Come on up. We looked into what we looked into. All the, all the pre-exam for the house, and how they do that, and Mr. Duca does all that, and even after we're done, it's gotta, the fire department's gotta go in that house, health department has to go in the house, and, so there's a vigorous, vigorous, to get this license done. It takes a lot of work, and you really gotta be living in the house, of course. So with that, and what I heard from, from people in the city, talking to them, that our job is to listen to the city and the people around them, and see what they think, and then we make our decision. And seeing that there was no one here for that, I would be voting in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm as well.
I will not be voting in favor.
I'll be in favor.
On the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, case ZBA 22-34, Langella Hall, for a short-term rental special permit to allow the premise to be used as a short-term rental property on the premise numbered 307 Water Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance. Second.
On the motion?
For a special permit, sorry, Grant.
Yeah.
Second.
On the motion? Standing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post, so move. Rhythm and tonight, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Means a lot.
ZBA 2239, Alpha P.C., for variance, finding to subdivide the four lots into two lots, keeping the existing single-family home, and construct a new single-family home on newly created lot 12, Adeline Street, African representative, yeah, Nigo. That's the purpose for, for, uh, the land up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming. With me this evening again, this was a matter that was continued from June 14th. Gavin Driscoll, Ed Roach, are the architects. You have Todd Ferguson as our surveyor, and Chi Man is joining us as well, he's the engineer. So on June 14th, after listening to the proposal, which is for the subdivision of a approximately 25,000 square foot lot into two lots, one lot over 8,000 square feet for lot size, maintaining a single-family residence, second lot will be a proposed single-family residence. There was a lot of neighbors here at that meeting as well, who expressed some concern with respect to a number of things. One was the size of the home, so we've listened, we did kinda bring that in a little bit, we did downsize it. Gavin will get a little bit more into that, but almost 300 square feet, we did downsize the home. There was question with respect to the soil, its proximity to the homes on Southern Ottery, which is the rare of this particular proposed home. At the request of this board, we did have an engineer, Chi Man, was out there, we did three or four test pits concerning soil conditions. Those came back positively, but Chi will get a little more detail into that. So that's where we are this evening. So again, most important thing, and it is, we did the test pits to make sure the soil conditions were such that they would support this foundation for a single-family residence, and downsizing, shrinking the home a little bit, at the request of the neighbors, too.
The only, the only thing you're looking for is frontage.
Right now, because we've, because we've downsized this home, we were meeting, all the setbacks, except with respect to the front setback, had to be pushed back a little in excess of 50 feet, which I wasn't even seeing that particular violation, because most of them, you're, you're looking for frontage, front setback, everything. But here, we exceed the 50 feet, just by one or two feet. We tried to bring that in further to meet it, but that affects another side because of the shape of the slot, so we kinda left that alone, thinking that would be less detrimental to anything, really. So we kept, kept that standing. If I may, unless you have questions for me specifically, I'll pass it on to first Gavin, who's the architect, Gavin Driscoll.
Yep.
Okay.
This is the updated landscape plan. We did bring the house two foot forward, make that 20 yards setback in the rear, but we did pull the household to the left side, away from the hill, to make it a little bit more flat. We took a chunk off the left side of the building, and also a big chunk of the front side of the building, just to reduce the scale, lower the scale of the building. We're replacing, we're taking out pine trees, and we're replacing that with ten trees, and also other buffers in the back of the property. We did add some evergreen trees that would be, by the full bloom, but they will be, they'll be full all year round, they'll break up that, the view from Southern Ottery. The living area on the first floor was 1499, the garage is 566, this production of 215 square feet total of living space. On the second floor, reduced at the same time as before, 4.6 and 1/4, and then two feet on the left side, the second floor is 2,064 of living space on the second floor. This is, just the updated elevations, it's pretty similar, but just overall, the scale of the building is just compressed to meet those setbacks.
And no questions? Anyone have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
And I'll let Chi Man from Hardy Man say a few words with respect to the test pits and the soil conditions.
That's what I'm interested in, right.
So, the owner contracted, he was a, for the resident, Chi Man, on 85 Washington Street. So we was on the site, conducted a total of four test pits, two at the footprint of the building, and two at the opening, open integration systems. All the test pits we dug down to about eight to nine feet, there's very good sand and gravel down to the bottom, no groundwater, no modeling, so it's all dry down to that nine feet to the bottom of the hole, so that's pretty much support our stormwater design, and as far as all the infrastructure, we have city water, and also the sand is so that can, on, on the main street, that may streak grow, we are gonna have a sewer pump, first of the great difficulties, we have to pump up, and into Ashmere Road for the sewer connections. The soil conditions, you know, the old mud, or, you know, any type of soft soil.
Now, just what we were looking for, make sure the whole foundation, right?
And the soil is great for the irrigation. And the soil is great for the irrigation as well.
Thanks.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. I think that's what we wanted to know. If you're gonna put that foundation, can that, can that piece of land hold? And we wanted to make sure. That's what I wanted to make sure. I think the board too wanted to make sure that this building ain't gonna slide anywhere, move anywhere. So, I'm happy with what I see now. I will be voting in favor.
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to see as much of, as much as a by right project as possible, which, thank you for shrinking that down and getting to that point. I think that, you know, that couple hundred square feet means a lot to me. So, I appreciate that. I'll be voting in favor.
Likewise, they, they moved the building forward a little bit, which is what I wanted to see. So, they've accommodated our requests. I'm in favor.
And with positive soil test, I'll be voting in favor.
Likewise.
On the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, case ZBA twenty-two dash thirty-nine, Alpha Pecy for a variance finding to subdivide the four lots into two lots, keeping the existing single-family home on one lot, and construct a new single-family home on the new, newly-created lot on the premise numbered twelve Adeline Place, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. So moved. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Further into tonight's business, new business, ZBA twenty-two forty-three. Sorry, wait a minute. Counselor, you're still in the middle. That was it. Thank you. Okay. I should have let you speak. I'm sorry. Huh? I, I apologize. Counselor was kind of speaking out last one. I didn't even give him a chance. After sitting here.
I was waiting.
Waiting.
It was early, though. Dave McCarthy, one-one counsel.
Hey, hey, hey. Got a meeting here.
Uh, Dave McCarthy, one-one counsel, forty-eight Whitney Road. I was still gonna come up and say that I wasn't gonna support the project. I still have concerns over the piece of land. You know, I was talking to a few of the folks back there, and I said, when you, when you close your eyes and look at the square footage, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned you were looking for relief for the, the frontage, but the, the land itself, uh, it's a horrible piece of land, which, which, which breaks over and goes down towards Southern Ottery. And I feel that, Mr. Fleming and Company have done a great job. They shrunk it a little. They'll, they'll make sure it's supported. But I still have concerns, not really with Edmira or anybody up, up high, but with, with Southern Ottery. You know, I, 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 I hope it's done right, because those folks get water in their cellar all the time, and that whole, we'll call it canyon, a crevice that's there, that runs down to the tennis courts, wears away every year. It's, it's worn away more and more. And this house is gonna be at the head of it, on top of, well, more or less embedded into that hill, sitting above Southern Ottery. So, I just wanted to say that I, I didn't really support this one. So, I come up here a lot, and a lot of the times, I, I, I try to do my homework on all of them, and this one, I don't have a good feeling about, but.
I just wanna say, with what they have for drainage on there, and the pumps, I think it's gonna be better for what's down there now. I think it's gonna really make it better for the people down below, because that water's gonna stay in those, in those cells, and then they're gonna get pumped right up into the sewer. So, I think it's gonna be better for everyone up there. That project's gonna help. That's my opinion. I really believe that.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further into tonight, Robert Matt for variance to subdivide the property and create a new buildable lot, seventy-one Pratt Road. Counselor. Thank you.
I deserve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members, good evening. Christopher Harrington, representing Robert Matty. My law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway in the city of Quincy, and I'm here on behalf of him for his application to subdivide a piece of property on Pratt Road in Squanum and build a single-family home. The sheet of paper that I passed out to you, that sheet of paper was in your packages that you received. There's a slight difference between the, the width of the lots and what was popped out of the city's system, the city printout that comes, the summary of what was entered into the city system, and that. So, I wanted to make sure that you had that piece of paper, so you have the accurate figures. We have a piece of property, seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty square feet. We're proposing to essentially split it in half, although not exactly in half, and create two lots. The first lot, which contains the existing house, would be eighty-eight hundred square feet and some change, and the newly-created lot would be eighty-four hundred square feet. So, both lots are significantly larger than the seventy-six fifty required in Residence A. The house that we're proposing to build has a very nice, two-story, single-family home. It's not gonna tower over the neighborhood. It's not gonna be a massive, obnoxious structure on the street. It's only two stories. Two and a half stories is allowed, as you know. It's twenty-six and a half feet tall, where maximum thirty-five would be allowed. So, it's not, it's not gonna be overpowering, I don't believe. Our width and frontage on these lots will be eighty-two feet and seventy-eight. Rather than just cutting the lot perfectly in half, eighty-eighty, we, we set the lots at eighty-two and seventy-eight. That accomplishes two things. One, for the existing house, it means that we don't have to touch the driveway. There's a lot line goes along the edge of the new driveway. But it also eliminates one of the variances that we had asked for, because now that house has a thirteen-foot side yard setback, where it wouldn't have that if we, if we were at eighty feet. So, we made that change to preserve the driveway and eliminate one of our variances. We have the front yard setback on the new house, side yards on both houses, rear yards on both houses. We have parking, everything that's required. This, we are requesting a dimensional variance for width of the lot and frontage on the way, just as a, as a comparison to other houses that are on just this one block of Pratt Road. We only looked at the, the twelve or fourteen or so houses that are just on this one section. On the other side of the street, the average house has a fifty-five foot lot. On our side, the average is fifty-nine feet. So, in my, my opinion, having two eighty-foot lots is, is a reasonable request. Also, with this variance we're requesting, we don't believe that, that it's substantially detrimental to the zoning ordinance. We're proposing a single-family home. It's not oversized. And the use that's allowed in an able single-family is what we're, we're meeting, and the dimensions comply with all the, all the dimension requirements. So, we don't think that this minor dimensional variance of a few feet on frontage is, is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood or to the zoning ordinance. In your packages, you have a set of the house plans. You also have engineer plans provided by Jim Burke and Jim DeSalle. Our architect was not able to be here this evening. He's on vacation, but we didn't want to postpone the hearing, so we decided to go forward with it. This is the, this is the house. As you can see, it's a very nice, two-story, single-family home. Not overly large. First floor is garage, is a full basement, and the first floor is a garage with kitchen, living, dining, a den, an entry hall. And then on the second floor, a master bedroom, a two-bedroom's hall with private bathrooms. So, it's a very nice, single-family home. I think it'll make a nice addition to the street. And our, our engineers are here, the surveyors, if you have any questions. We did not, we did not design a drainage system for this property. The driveway, there's plenty of grass on either side of the driveway, in the front yard, so the driveway will just pitch left and right, right onto the lawn, and all of the downspouts for the roof will go right out onto the lawn through, through downspouts, right, right into the grass.
And the trees, how many trees you taking on there? Because there are some big, big trees in the, in the middle of that lot.
On the right side.
On this, on this, on the second sheets of construction, I mean, is it?
I just thought you'd have it on top of your head.
Excuse me?
How many, how many trees are coming on?
What, I tell you, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, because it's one.
And then what are you gonna, are you gonna do something? Are you gonna pay the city? Are you gonna do something? They have pine, more trees.
There's gotta be, all the landscaping, the, the, the. This is on Robert Matty. He's right here. He's, he's planning on replicating the trees.
That lot had some huge, huge, huge.
Yeah, but a lot of them, the bigger ones are on the right side, I guess, besides this one. That one.
Right. No, those are my questions. Any questions?
No. Actually, I did have one. Was this, was this originally three lots?
Four.
It was four.
It was, it was four. It was laid out as four twenty-foot lots back in the day, and then it was combined into a single parcel.
Okay.
That's why you pitched it ten, you know, okay. Your cousin's coming over, you pitched it out at ten.
The woman who owned this house was the oldest woman in this home.
It's a beautiful house. It's good. It's good. Any questions?
No, no questions. I'll say it.
Thanks. If anyone wants to speak in favor, anybody wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? No one wants to speak in favor? Three, gone. Any correspondence? Yep. Thank you. Any correspondence?
We have reviewed the submittal for the above-referenced project, and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged when treated. Three, install a cleanup service, cleanup for the sewer pipe. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the subdivision. Five, upon completion of the project, as though planned, showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file.
Is there anyone, call it out here and close. Anyone opposed, one undecided? Opposed, one undecided. Want to speak? Second call? Third call, closed. Thanks, it's beautiful. Huh?
It's quiet.
It's quiet. They must be okay with it.
Must not be the church.
They speak up. Yeah. So, I guess everyone, everyone, take your homework, here, Mr. Harrington. Take your homework, I guess. Because it is a beautiful lot. It'd be beautiful without a house in that, that would, that is, that house would go in. I like to say luck alone, but, you know, I know. I'll be voting in favor. It's a beautiful house, and it's gonna be a beautiful lot. It'll, it'll look really nice.
It was probably the largest parcel and in Squanum left. And I, you knew this was gonna happen as soon as somebody bought it. I'm glad somebody who has a good track record and has built some nice things in, in the area and understands the area's gonna do something. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
Nice-looking addition. I'll be in favor.
Likewise.
On the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, case number ZBA twenty-two dash forty-three, Robert Matty for a variance to subdivide the property and create a new buildable lot for residential structure on the premise numbered seventy-one Pratt Road, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Are you going down to Hingham this Thursday? You going to Hingham?
What's her name?
Emma. I guess you're not going. You didn't get invited.
They don't allow you.
No, the Salem program for the kids. I didn't know if you were going down.
Oh, it was, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right. I didn't know if you were gonna be there. Further into tonight's agenda. I apologize. If you can't help me with this. How do you say the name?
Sockow.
Sockow. Sockow for variance to add one dormer to the left side of the house on the premise numbered forty-seven Marshall Street. African Representative.
Hi, I am the homeowner.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Sockow. I live at forty-seven Marshall Street.
Okay.
So, um, what I wanted to do was ask for a variance to add a dormer to the left side of the house. So, if you look at the floor plan, it's angled there, and we wanted to add a dormer, so we could add a window on each bedroom. That's the side that we want the dormer on. And the floor to area, to lot area ratio is, we're only allowed point four, right? So, the, if we, if you grant it, it would be point four one afterwards.
Right. My question is, how come you didn't match the other side?
I'm sorry?
How come you didn't match the dormer on your other side, just to make the house look symmetrical, sort of, instead of?
Because, um...
Because it's looking like a three-family house from there, now.
I know. Um, so, that one dormer is actually, that existing one is already a bathroom that we applied for in two thousand and five.
Right.
And then we had that bathroom. You guys granted it. But then the front, if you look at it from the front, um, it's actually a staircase leading up to that third floor. So, we couldn't match, um, the whole entire.
Why didn't you match at least the, the dimensional of it, not going up a lot higher?
Oh, um...
Because it looks, it looks like this.
Yes. Um, at that point, we only had money, when my parents bought the house, for the, the bathroom addition. And then later on, um, they grant, they saved up enough money to do the left side, but, um, we need a variance for that.
But why didn't you match the other side, the same height? So, when you're down the street, you look at the house, you're not seeing this. Two different roof lines.
Two different roof lines. Okay, I see what you mean. Um, that's a good question. When the architecture was making the plans, he thought that was the best part.
It, it, to me, it doesn't look good. Look at it. It's, it's like, see a house?
Yes, I do.
It looks weird. It really does. It's like, at least match the, if you have enough room on this side and this side, do you have enough room with that dorm?
Height-wise.
Height-wise?
Height-wise.
With your bathroom, do you have enough room?
Yeah, we do.
I mean, it's, it's high. It looks like a plane, high enough.
Um, there is enough height room in the bathroom.
Yeah. Why wouldn't you take this? Just my question. You, you can ask anything you want. That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
But to make it look the same.
Um, so when...
And it's a short distance. It's probably, I don't know, eight inches or something, ten inches?
Because when those plans were made, the house was still under my dad's name. So, when I got the plans, I didn't see, like, when I looked at it, it looked good enough. But, I know. But, um, so, when I looked at it, because we were already going past the, um...
Are you wanting to match that, the other one, the height, make it look the same, so when you're down the street, you're looking at the house to look?
Much better.
Not like it was pieced together?
Uh, yes. I would like to, but we were already...
You know what I'm saying, guys? Like, so it, it looks the same when you're looking at it.
No, we, we, we can, we can approve it with that change. So, we wouldn't need to look at new plans. He's just saying, would you be willing to do that?
Yes, I'd be willing to. Because, like, we were so close, and then we're over it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna make you get new plans to come back and do another. If, if you're all right with it, that's the way we'd like to look at it.
Yes.
If it was the same.
The house looks right, driving up to it.
Valid.
You know, it's, hey, hey. Aesthetically correct. All right, those are my questions.
I don't have any questions at this.
Well, symmetry is fine.
Yeah.
Because it's all symmetrical. You guys are okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
And then, um, would I resubmit, like, the new?
No, you're all set.
Okay.
When you, we're gonna tell you what to do afterwards, if it gets approved.
Okay.
And if it don't, you'll know that, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can sit down for a second.
Is there anyone want to speak in favor of this addition? First call?
I do. Mr. Robert. On Rutherford, sixty-two Gramwell Road. I'm in favor of the original one, and I'm in favor of whatever Matty says. Thank you.
Thanks, John. First time you agreed with me in a month.
A month?
Hey, 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 okay. I gave it to him. I got, yeah, that's probably a couple months ago. Third call, anyone? Call it out here and close. I have a letter here from the DPW. We reviewed the above-referenced project and have no comments. June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, forty, Marshall Street. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? Opposed, run the side? First call? Second call? Opposed, run the side? Third call, closed. I'll be voting in favor with that correction, that, that they make the dormers the same size. I know it's the full length of that, but it's gonna look the same.
Yeah, from the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I'm in favor. Same.
In favor with that provision.
Agree.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, case ZBA twenty-two dash forty-six, Sockow for a variance to add one dormer to the left side of the house on the premise numbered forty-seven Marshall Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Same height as the one on the left. Right.
At, at the same height as the one on the right.
Second it?
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. So moved.
So, when you, when you go to submit your building plans, whenever you hire a builder, just let them know to submit the correct plans with the same, with it's same, same height. All right? Then you're all set.
Thank you. Further into tonight's agenda, Carly Spink for variance to add one additional parking spot on the premises numbered one twenty-one Fifth Street, Unit One, ZBA twenty-two forty-nine, African Representative. Hi, how are you? You have the floor. Name and address for the record.
Uh, Carly Spink, one twenty-one Fifth Street.
And you want to put a parking space on the left side of the one you have?
Yeah, so we just bought this home in October, and it's two-family home. Our tenant... Our tenants have two parking spaces, and we currently only have one. Um, it's a very old street, and it's very difficult to park on, especially for where our house is. It's right on a curve.
It's hot.
Yeah, it's really challenging, especially in the winter, which we just experienced our first one there. So we'd just love to have another space for a car.
The house in the back, number, was 123?
Yes.
Is that the rear door in the back of that house, or is that?
Um, oh, because there's like three different, yeah, it's kind of funky. So there's like the two front doors, and then they have two doors on their side. One goes into like their living room.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it was another unit there.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, there's only two units.
Right.
Yeah.
So, uh, I know, it's, it's, it's really tight. That truck they have, the deposit, I don't think it'll even fit if we give it to them, but a car will. Uh, four doors with a bed. It's barely gonna make it, but I would, yeah. Yeah, but that's where the truck is. It won't fit there. Uh, I'd like to see him do pavements though.
I agree.
Because it's right next to the walkway, you know? And they could.
No asphalt.
And do that, yeah, no asphalt, but I think it would look cheap.
Like more pervious. That'd be okay?
Um, I think so. I did have one question, if you don't mind. So we're planning on, I know there's like the asphalt walkway there, which we don't want. We're eventually gonna want to replace that with something pervious, like pavement.
Do it all, and do the whole thing together once.
Okay.
Have you run a parking space, you'll right over.
Okay.
Maybe get rid of the tire and do it all, one big spot. Nice.
Okay, yeah, we have some renovations to work through.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because it's only probably another foot from what you showed, right?
Yeah, it's tight to that, yeah.
And it's really, it's really, you gotta go there to get the eight.
Yeah, I know.
It's tight.
Well, that's what I mean, like, go all the way, make it look nice.
Right. Do the walkway and everything. All right. Any questions?
No.
Nope.
No.
Go ahead.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? New parking space, front of a house. Second call? Third call? Call out, party, hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, 121 Fifth Street, case number ZBA 2249. We review the above referenced project, have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Opposed or undecided, third call? Call out, party, hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor, especially if it's all impervious area, it'll look nice.
I'm in favor, same conditions.
In favor?
Yep. We have a motion, please.
ZBA 2249, Carly Spink for a variance to add one additional parking spot on the premise number 121 Fifth Street, Unit 1, and make a motion to grant the variance as long as it's an impervious area.
Second.
On a motion, standing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed, come on. Further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA 2253.
Siddharth Ramshankar.
Refining to finish the basement, need more living space on the premise number 135 Summer Street, Sumner Street, Unit 2, Quincy. The African representative here. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Siddharth Ramshankar, 135 Sumner Street, Unit 2. Um, so we bought this house two years ago, and we thought it was enough space. We had a child, and it became a lot smaller quickly. Um, and now that he's moving around a lot more, it's, uh, and we're still sort of in the middle of working from home. It's been a little bit more easy to try to find quieter places, but he can move around, and it's harder to find those quieter places again. So we're trying to finish the basement to give us more room, either for him to be downstairs to play, or for us to have some office space that's a little bit quieter. I submitted some plans that I kind of drew up.
Yeah.
What we've kind of estimated for the spaces. Um, we've run this by a contractor just to see what it would, if it's feasible, and said it was.
Yep.
Um, and yeah, happy to take any questions.
You have a full bathroom now.
What was that?
You putting a full bath down there?
That was the idea, yeah.
Full bath, not a half bath?
Not a half. Initially my wife's idea.
Huh?
We, um, now that we have a kid, we also have grandparents coming visiting, so.
You stick them down the basement. Dad, a boy. Love you, grandparents.
Uh, just want they both come at the same time, that's nice, so.
Yeah, well, then you gotta flip a coin. How's that?
Exactly.
Huh? Well, they got here first, man. All right, I have no questions. I have no questions. I just, uh, it'd be a nice update, and the full bath was my only question, you know, full bath down there, okay, I get it now.
Yeah, I, I'd love more space myself.
Yeah.
Full bath is good for your in-laws downstairs.
Don't come up until breakfast.
No questions.
No questions.
No. And you're gonna have a seat. Is there anyone in favor of finishing this basement? First call? Second call? John? You in favor of finishing the basement with more room? I mean, I mean, you're the only one I get to talk to tonight.
Get out of here early. I think that's a great presentation, and I think it would make, you know, great new growth. Will add extra tax value to that house. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Boy, look wait.
Last call, anyone? Call out, party, hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, 135 Sumner Street, case number ZBA 2253. We review the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call? Third call, closed. Uh, I'll be voting.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. Favor.
Favor.
Favor.
Motion, favor.
ZBA 2253, Siddharth Ramshankar for a finding to finish a basement, creating more living space on the premise number 135 Summer Street, Unit 2, Quincy. I would make a motion to grant the finding.
Second.
On a motion, standing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed, come on. Yep. Oh, you got it. She's doing great.
Oh, we know you're.
Hey, you might be out of here in July. Okay, she says. Uh, that's Madame Clark, and she'll be leaving us two more meetings. And we have a new Clark, which will be great, and she will do great here. If she can put up with us tonight, she'll do great. Figure ourselves out, I guess.
Don't throw us into the bus, yes.
ZBA 2256, Patrick Foley Esquire for a variance, use variance, special permit to construct a 44-unit residential building on premise 17 Bennett Lane. Counselor, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, and I represent 17 Bennett Lane Associates LLC. I'm joined here tonight with Elida Alba from Chuen Associates, and Chi Man, who is our civil engineer, and Jack Gilhams, our traffic engineer. Um, it was about a year ago, we were before this board with our initial proposal. Our initial proposal of 50 units with 52 parking spots, got mixed reviews from the board. You know, there was some good, good feedback about its proximity to the train station. There's also a lot of negative feedback about our parking situation. Uh, over the course of the year, uh, we worked at the planning board, um, the planning department on multiple occasions. Um, we went to the planning board, we got approved. Um, over the course of the year, we've dropped the unit count from 50 to 46 down to 44. So we're now at 44 two-bedroom, two-bath condo units. Uh, we've increased our parking from 52 parking spots to 73 parking spots. Um, the lot size is 28,483 square feet, and this is gonna be marketed towards people with a commuter, a commuter-friendly building um, with bike racks and with this proximity to the train station, it's about 300 yards away from the Quincy Adams Train Station. Um, I know when we were originally back here, about a year ago, again, there's comments on the density and the design of the building, um, which we have made some changes to. And Elida will get into a little more detail. On those.
Elida Alba with Chuen Company Architects, One Buildings Road, Quincy.
You're gonna have to speak up so we can hear it. We're on tape. Or you can stand there and talk, and someone else, yeah, someone else can help you there.
Teamwork.
You have a low voice.
Okay. So, as Pat mentioned, this is a five-story building. We have now 44 units and 73 parking spaces. We have the existing building right over here, and this is the new addition.
Yep.
And then also a new addition right here. Most of the parking is located in the basement, and most of that now, a parking on the first floor, which is more hardened, has needed more parking spaces. So this is the original basement for the building, and that's where the parking spaces are, about 18 parking spaces in this area. And then this is under the new addition, for 24 more parking spaces under this area over here. We also have seven parking spaces outside.
How many? Seven.
It's two floors apart.
First floor. Now we have parking on this area of the building. That's the garage door, which I'm doing now. Um, there's 24 parking spaces on this area now, first floor. And then we have four units on the right side of the building with the doors to hold the addition. Second floor, third floor, fourth floor, and fifth floor have the same layout. There's ten units per floor. All units are two-bedroom, two-bathroom. They all have balconies. Some of them have, um, Julian balconies, but that's where it's not, it's very rough. Um, the units for footage vary from 400 square feet to 720 square feet. But, um, you can use a lot with the similar to all, uh, lots. Just the roof plan, there's not more roof, we have not, have open roof deck or anything else there. There's just a house up there, but there's no access, um, for the roof.
Is that all full of solar up top? Solar up top, the whole thing?
Um, no.
No? How come? It's a beautiful lot, wide open.
Maybe we can stop there.
That's a shame. Really is. Building that big. Putting in doing nothing. Each reverse.
This is the elevation, the main entrance located in the central building. Um, all the materials consist of concrete and private cementing outside it. Also have balconies, which have, um, railing, and all windows are double-hand windows, two over two, for a more residential look. Um, here we have the side of right side elevation, and this is probably like right down, access to parking underneath the building. This is the back elevation, um, not visible from anywhere, rather than the main truck. And then this is the left side elevation, which is similar to the right side. So we have some perspective, residents here. Um, this is the building looking down from all that street. Looking down from, um, overall street again, from here. You mostly see the left side of the building, the right side of the building is not visible, because of the top of the buildings. And then this is looking down from, like, if you stand in like behind, um, this building on overall, down this way. But it's pretty much not visible from there, any of the streets up here. That's about it. Um, Chi Man, you know, about the ceiling line.
Again, the recommenders, Chi Man, Harley, that's many designers, uh, shopping by Washington Street, Wayne, uh, registered civil engineers working on this project. Again, looking at the area, this is, um, the building, so the proposed building, so it's basically surrounded by the train track and also multifamily buildings. Um, with the exception on the, on the independent street side, it's a couple, um, single-family buildings. But on the train track side, there's a foundation building. This is where the load is, and it's toward this, the, uh, another multifamily buildings on towards the Quincy Center side. Yeah, this is the site layout plan, the original building, and the out of proof print is the proposed additions. Um, we have, the main entrance floor is right here. We have two, uh, proposed handicap, uh, handicap parking. This is the garage entrance to the, um, first floor garage. And from the site, coming down through terrace, this is the drive. Driveway that comes down to the lower level, which is the basement to access to the pool garage on the lower level. We have a couple of the parking here, and three more parking here that's up for the rest, uh, with the parking. And also for ego structure, we have we have city waters connections to overall terrace, um, uh, so connections that, for connection also available at the overall terrace, at the intersection of, um, overall terrace and, uh, in the better now. The site is, uh, it's kind of, uh, topography-wise, it's kind of lower than the, um, in the better now. So, um, our center is going to be served by a pump station and pump up within the sections. Um, and we take advantage of the change of that elevations. So this driveway is gradually slowed down to get access to the lower, lower garage entrance. So works out with the existing grade, we don't have to do a whole lot of, uh, cut and fill on this side. And stormwater, we, we pretty much, um, adding a little bit more impervious. Uh, the site is has pretty much building and parking with, uh, with everything, but the green space. Um, so the building is going to take up the remaining of the green space. But, um, the stormwater system we have designed is going to be taking all the roof water and internally come down with a big underground retention system. So, um, we pretty much got, uh, approval from the planning board. Um, we, we did a couple, um, revisions, and also the city engineers request us to do additional task page, which we did provide to the, um, uh, city engineers and also the PFPU consultant. All the outstanding item has been reviewed and approved with, um, a couple items that we are going to be addressing, such that we located the existing utility pole, which, uh, it is actually under, under, uh, we have a work order with, uh, the power company to do that, since now the, the building is vacant. We haven't removed the pole in the last bill month, because the building was still under, uh, occupied at that time. We also have a erosion control plans. Um, we want to make sure we have double row of, um, erosion control barrier. Um, we have that on the, um, top of the slope before we get down to the train track. Um, so that, um, and also the two sides, we want to make sure during construction, that's no erosion barriers, that's, that's not patient, too patient to go off the site. And, uh, that was fairly conditioned by the planning board for us to work with the MBTA, because the building is so close to the MBTA track. We actually started that process, we made the online application with the MBTA. Um, they don't really have the right to say what we build, but because we are not on their property, but because our building is close to the track, they want to make sure all the safety will see to, you know, the planes that fall off the track or something.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty much the, um, the suggestions. If there's any questions.
Insurance, right, on a building.
How are you gonna insurance?
For construction. For construction.
I mean, that existing building, like, it's just, who's, and why, why is the existing building staying? Why is the existing building staying?
The electrical factory.
Yeah.
Um, did, did go and just keep the footing of it?
Just, oh, it's.
Yeah, they keep, they keep it the foundation of the building.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. No, 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 no. I said, I said that right in the presentation, they keep, they keep it the footing of the building, yeah.
Existing buildings.
Brian, you, Brian, you'll give a hot attack.
No, I'm like, I'm like. Like, how are you gonna build around this thing, you know? like, how are you going to build around this thing, you know? Alright, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Can't be nervous there for a minute.
Stand over, keep the foundations and
So the back line of that foundation is going to be extended?
Yeah.
Right, so the, you take out the backside, that'll be extended, okay.
And the official is going to manage the existing slab on the
Okay, okay. And then it's just framed, four stories of frame on top of that, okay. With a platform on the right side of the park, okay. Makes more sense now.
Yeah.
All you got to do is ask.
I, I'm like, sitting here, I'm like, uh, hey. Look like in the church. I have no, uh, question, and, and I'm just glad the parking's up to seventy-three spaces, because that really bothered me the last time, parking, even though it's plus fifteen and everything, but you got a lot of parking now, and I feel a lot better now.
I have no questions at this time.
Yeah. Um, sounds like they made the, uh, the changes, I was here at the last hearing, so I have no, no other questions at this time.
Yeah, I was pretty disposed to vote against it last time, but you, you fixed the parking, so I'll be approving it.
I think there'll be more cars up there because of the access to highway versus the T, which is, that's one of the unique things about that site up there.
Right.
Whereas if it was closer to a T station in Wallace or something.
Different, yeah.
It would be different, so.
Will they open a gate in there?
Yeah, gate's open.
Gate's open, gate's open. Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, closed. Yeah, I, I just, I just want to read this from Brian.
Uh, we have reviewed and provided comments of this project to the planning board. All comments we've provided have been addressed properly. We do not have any further comments with this on board, we feel that's
Now, it's just a letter here from Brian Kamouchi explaining that there's a meeting here tonight that is with his fellow constituents. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please come up, state name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Savage, eleven Oak Grove Terrace.
What was your name?
Sharon Savage.
Sharon. You have the floor, Sharon.
Um, I've, I've only been there since November.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I just found out about this project a month ago. And, um, I'm concerned about the scale of the building. It's excessively large for such a small footprint. Um, congestion, once forty-four additional units go in such a small space when you have a large building next door with, I don't know how many units are over there. And then, well, our unit, there's thirteen units. Traffic, even though they, they're saying seventy-three parking spaces for forty-four units. If most of those people have two, most people, say if half of those people have two cars per unit, then you have visitors. It's going to get really bad for such a small street. That's just my, my opinion. The dog park area, how many people in those buildings are going to have dogs? That little tiny dog spot that they have in the back corner, it's not going to be enough. I say probably half that building will probably have dogs, and they're going to be going. There is a lot, the, next to the building, next to it, on, um, it's Independence Ave. But, and everybody takes their dogs over there right now, in that lot. And, and I also, I'm also concerned if they're going to be building on that lot next. So forty-four units to me is excessive. Um, and I also, is Bennett Lane, is that a public, is that a public lane? Is that going to be for public parking or just private, just for them to, to enter and exit the building?
Just for them to enter and exit the building?
Mm-hmm, that's an, that's my question.
It's private, private.
It's private. Okay, it's private. So, so the, the, um, excess, the excess parking on the side of eleven Oak Grove Terrace, they have to drive onto Bennett Lane to leave there? That's, that is another question that I have, because they're going to be driving, say, there are six spots on the side of the building, if I'm not mistaken. They have to drive onto Bennett Lane, which is private lane, to get in and out of their spots. So I, I just, I, you know, those are just questions that I have. And I just think the scale is, is excessively large. Twenty-four units, I have no objection to, but forty-four, to me, that's excessive.
Thank you. Right, the ten years, seven spaces.
Yeah, right, on the front.
Yeah.
That's the wall here, the proposed wall. Well, they can't get, yeah, they can't, they have to go around to the
Is there anyone else? Step forward, please. Opposed or undecided?
Good evening, my name's Brandy Hernandez, eleven Oak Grove Terrace as well. So we also moved in, in November, and so kind of picture, third floor of eleven Oak Grove Terrace being sold on a view of the Blue Hills, only to find out a few weeks later, the same developer is planning on building a five-story building in that said view, that you just paid seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for. And let me tell you, I don't come for money. I'm twelve years active duty military, used the V A loan to buy this, worked real hard, tried to get something nice for my family. And trying to find out that, within a year, I'm probably going to lose a ton of property value. Never mind, I lived next to a construction project for two years. Um, and then also, just the parking side, kind of what Sharon brought up, that being a one-way Bennett Lane around. I need to turn the wrong way down that to get to my parking spot, that was built at like a twenty-degree grade. So it's already difficult to get out and in into that spot, never mind having someone else's car there as an opposition force to me trying to get in. And then with snow removal on top of all that, it's going to be excessively difficult to manage anything around that area. And I'll tell you, it's tight. And then also, looking at their plans for trash removal, we have the same, about the same size dumpster for a twelve-person unit. It overflows and we have to get it taken out twice a week. And that dumpster is located under the balconies of more tenants in our building than where it's proposed for their trash.
The city will make sure they have the right, the right size to take care of their trash. They can't leave it like that, they just don't, they can't
And that's, and that's also the goal.
Twice a day, it'll come out twice a day.
Okay.
They can't do that.
That's the goal, because moving into our place, it's unfortunate that we just saw the opposite effect of, with the same, where the trash is overflowing.
So you do that for the view, he said to you, look at the view.
The real estate agent that I worked with multiple times, with the developer in there, we looked at the view together, and I don't think that's right.
No, it ain't right, it's just
And that's, and it's across the hallway, and, you know, I'm
They knew then they were going to build something.
Right. And it was a couple of weeks after closing, where I'm walking my dog outside, the electrician company ladies come out smoking a cigarette, telling me, can't believe anybody bought that place, they're going to build this huge unit, so even they knew what was going on. And I just think it's a little bit deceitful to have these huge windows, huge windows, they're beautiful.
Look at a building.
To look out, to look into somebody else's condo structure. And I just feel like, I don't ever get a chance to really have a home, we're always moving around. But getting a chance to walk around, walking my dog is the best, the best. Getting to know the neighborhood, getting to know the people. I almost feel a little unfortunate that I bought there, because they hate that the building I live in already blocks their view. So now to say it's even going to be worse.
Yeah.
The people that live there and have lived there their whole lives and generational, they don't like it.
Yeah, no, no, no one likes change, that's for sure, but to be sold something like that, that's
Right. And I think there's definitely a negotiation point to be had. I know me saying, don't build this building, is, is not reasonable. But to find maybe a negotiation point in between that huge building on a dead-end street that's already fairly congested, I think, I think we could find something in between.
I just want to know, when you're pulling up, is there a wall going over there, out front?
Where's your, where's your part?
So
The part is underneath, right?
We have one spot underneath, and then we also have spots outside on the same street where Bennett Lane is proposed to be.
So like, you're here.
Yes, I'm in the spot right here, by the stairs. So it's at a really steep grade, so like coming out
And what's behind you right here?
The height right here. Um, no, this is a storm break.
So you come out and go like this?
Come like this, but this is how steep it is, and it's saying, and it, looking at those plans
Yeah, it's at least twenty degrees.
Yeah. It's just, it's really ambitious, I think, to try to shove all those amounts of people and cars and guests and dogs into such a small area.
Yeah, but why, you can't go in there, you're not going to be able to do that now.
Not going to be able to do a loop around, it's going to be some janky.
You can't go, you can't go in there.
Yeah.
That's where the building is.
Right, that's where the bill is probably going to be, and heaven forbid there's any snow or ice, because I am going down, I already have.
There's no way for you to come this way, right?
Which way?
Can you come in this way?
No, no, I said that in advance.
The only way you can come in is this.
Is that way.
Yeah, there's no way to come, the building's right here, on the spot. There's no way to do it.
So it's just, I think that's a little
And this is a bit locked in here.
Correct.
Yeah, I know, I know. No, I know exactly what, what I'm saying, yeah. But I didn't even realize that they came in the same, when it's here. So that wall
Yeah, so this is going to
Yeah, that's going to come out a wall, right?
So, this is going to be a wall.
Yeah.
Or six, five.
Yeah, you have the same thing, yeah. But that's ongoing.
Yeah. You have to let them in the park.
It's the same one, right? Same one for both of us? So he's probably giving you some prices.
Yeah, exactly, you just pull in, pull in, right.
Mutually use each other.
Yeah.
Those are all my points, and I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Name and address for the record, please.
Alexi Bygrave, eleven Oak Grove Terrace.
Alexi, you're up.
And so I'd first just like second what's been said, and I agree. Uh, we've just moved in, and again, this is the first we're hearing about this new building, and for which we've been looking directly at.
Did you buy a unit then?
We bought a unit there.
How, how long ago?
Uh, we bought this in April, we closed April. And so, yeah, this is the first we're hearing. And I have a few questions. One question is about, I didn't see in these plans what was happening with the trees. It was mentioned that there's not much existing green area, which would be taken up with the new construction. And I believe, well, there's a beautiful oak tree on what will probably be the property line. And, and I'm assuming this is the namesake of eleven Oak Grove Terrace. And is that going to be removed? What plans are there for more trees? And from a practical point of view, um, where the building currently is, there's a decent amount of space to the right-hand side. So as was mentioned, you know, a smaller building construction here would have no issues, but like, how can a fire truck come in and turn arounds if everything is building? And so from a kind of safety perspective, I'm anxious to know how that would be managed.
I mean, there's, there's forty feet here, there's no to pull in, that's what they're going to do. What tree is that, or the big one that's in the piece of the land? Which tree, is that big thing?
Uh, yeah.
That's in your building, that's our building, this, this tree here. That one, that's gone. So who, so who would you put?
Yeah. And we got a tree on it, so whatever they take out, they got to either put back. New trees, the same, or more trees, that'll be the same.
I'm guessing everything on the backside, everything on the backside.
But I can't believe, you bought something that they told you, but look at the view, and then put it out on the front. That's pretty, that's pretty bad.
Hey, you know those salesmen.
Yeah, oh, I do, I do. I'll tell you, I bought a place, I bought in Florida, oh my Jesus Christ. What are you going to be going?
May I, may I can answer some questions?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, uh, we did review the, uh, the fire truck accident, uh, it's the Campbell Fire Department. And, uh, they keep, as the jury asked us to widen the driveway to twenty-four feet, and we did a turning campus to provide him that the truck can come out to this end of the building. And, um, this set by there. And that's, uh, this correspondent is talking to the planning board, uh, who go
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Are you going to comment?
Yeah.
John Roderfeld, sixty-two Ground Wall Road. I don't blame, um, the zoning board on this case, I blame the planning board. Because, you know, when you're planning, it's kind of like when we're planning the downtown. Instead of planning it all at once, they had a master developer, it's just one lot at a time. Uh, all I'm thinking about is the poor people that bought up at Clivedon Place, that, you know, they have development forever. Did they tell those people that they were going to be building forever and forever and forever? I'm thinking right now, the Walliston Urban Redevelopment Plan. This basically gives everyone the permission to build these crazy buildings next to the two families, three families in the residential neighborhood, and they don't even have to come to the zoning board. I mean, I can't believe it, I mean, the people in the city of Quincy, the new people who are moving here, they're not going to stay. And if the new people who move here don't stay, who's going to come to Quincy? You know, it's going to turn into, you know, a word that starts with a G. I'm not even going to say it, because I don't want to jinx us. Because right now, you know, the, the city's in tough shape, we need, I mean, the developer, we need the new growth. We need the new taxes, so anyone that's moving to Quincy, if we don't have this new growth, then taxes are going to skyrocket. We are in, you know, dire need of tax revenue, and we're trying to squeeze as much in development as we can. I just think it's really bad planning that that whole area wasn't planned all at once. And, you know, there's, you know, this is happening all around the city, you know, but people don't get a notice unless you're in a butter and you're only five hundred feet away. That's so, that's barely nobody. So, you know, there's really nothing that we can do. I mean, I mean, it's, I got a feeling that you guys are probably going to pass this, but I'm going to say that the planning board are the people who shouldn't have passed this to bring this case to you. It's not fair, because you guys are just giving, you know, relief for something to get that new growth that we need. Because without zoning relief, we can't have new growth in the city, because they've built everywhere. So that's my point, like I said, I think the developer does build, um, you know, new things. I hope the people that bought those condos are happy, are, you know, they high-quality condos, because they're, they're going to be building more of them. I just hope that all the new stuff that we do build in Quincy, we build really, really, really high-quality things. So when the people move here, it's a two-bedroom with three bathrooms, with two master bedrooms, you know? We got to stop putting extra parking, we got to start, you know, we, we don't really have extra parking, but when we do have parking places, we have to make sure the parking places are real parking places, where you can get in and you can get out. You know, because people have to open their doors, and you want to back in, and you don't want to hit other cars. And I'm sorry for talking so much, have a good night, thank you.
That's what took so long, the parking, I think, in this place, because we didn't have enough parking there, and now they do, but they didn't before. And if that's what they wanted to build, we need places for people to pull into. Anyone else? Last call, all the party hearing closed. You know, it's like, uh, it's frustrating to hear that, people sell your stuff and don't tell you, oh, I looked at that view, but it ain't going to be here. That would piss me off a lot of times, that would, that kind of do, seven hundred and twenty grand, building in front of you, and that's, and that's what they sold it on? That's sad, that's sad. And I think the city's better than that, and we should have people that represent it a little better when you're building stuff, so. It's aggravating to hear that, it really is. And, and, and something that this board's going to, pretty soon, we're going to have a reorganization meeting, we're going to talk about this. There's some things we have to talk about, I think, as a board, uh, what's going on. With all these projects coming in every which way, uh, I think we need a little more say, as a zoning board myself. That's me, but I think you guys feel the same way, when it just comes at your left, right, and, and you're getting all these budgets stuck in the middle of nowhere, and you're like, let's slow down, everybody, and let's get a bigger plan, let's get a plan together that we can all live with, not ninety units, eight units there. And two years from now, it probably don't fit there, but we got it, yeah. So I think master planning has to be a little better for the city too right now. And there's buildings going everywhere, but this building here, uh, I mean, it is what it is, it's, 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 some people got screwed in this deal, I think. I don't think it's fair to them, but it doesn't make it's not fair to the guy who's trying to build another building. But I think you should have been a little more favorable to the people that were buying, buying there across the street, if you owned them both, that's, that's just a shame. But the project itself, I asked you to do a few things, this, we all, the board asked you to do a few to do a few things, we all asked, we wanted something else, and you did what I've asked, so I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it stinks about the view, but we don't protect anyone's view
No, we don't.
Unless you're on the water.
Unless, unless you're in the water.
Unless there's nobody in front of you.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's, you know, somebody builds a beautiful house, the second house in, and walk a day later, because somebody else builds a house right in front of them.
That's right. No, you can't, sorry.
So we don't, we don't take into account the view. I would like to see the developer work with them on whatever type of parking plan they
And what they got to do, right?
And what they got to do, especially during the construction phase, hopefully they'll do that. But that being said, I'm in favor of the board.
Concur with what's been said, I feel very bad for people who bought across the street. If what you said is truthful, you know, it just sounds like a bit of misrepresentation. But that's not before us, that's another hearing you might have. What's before us is this project, it's my second time hearing it, you've done what I asked you to do, so.
I assume, Patrick, there will be some sort of mutual use easement to allow people on both sides, since it's the same owners?
I think it's listed on that.
Yeah. Second, what, what, what's the proposed selling price of these units?
Six fifty.
Okay, is that the high, or is that the?
Six fifty to eight hundred.
Okay.
Eight hundred, yeah, that's a little bit high. Six fifty, I'll take the cost.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we don't have a master planner, specifically, even if it was just, you know, you know, per neighborhood, we have no idea, you know, we're just dropping these things all over the place. But we did ask you to come up with more parking, we did ask you to clean the building up, which you did, it's a nice brick front. And having said that, I'll vote for it.
So Brian, comments?
I'm in the same, same vote. You know, we, we didn't have this input when we originally ran this project by everybody, and then came back with what we asked them to do, and it's difficult to keep asking them to go back when the planning's already approved. It's, 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 it's an unusual set of circumstances in an unusual area. And there is a bunch we can do about the guy that lied to the board, not building them, so. Again, they did what we asked, and that's all we can do. And I have to say, I'll be voting in favor.
Come on the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZB A twenty-two fifty-six, Patrick Foley, S Y F, for variance, use variance, special permit to construct a forty-four unit residential building on the premise number seventeen Bennett Lane, Quincy. Make a motion to grant a variance to use variance in the special permit.
Second.
On the motion, standing in on favor, all right, both, so move. That shouldn't happen. Fair motion again, please. Yeah, Brian, make your motion again.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, make motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
Both, so move. Night, everyone, thank you.